Okay. So, Madam Chair, if you want to just acknowledge that there's a forum? Just by indicating, you know, everyone's present, so forth?
I think so. Everyone's here, but we're not voting, so I don't know that we have to worry about a quorum. But we do have all the members of the board are here.
Fair enough. All right. You're correct. This is a work session, so you're correct. So... Where to begin? Let me just give you a little background, and I'm not sure if I ever shared this with all of you as board members. As you know, before coming to the village of Mamaroneck, I was with the city of Mount Vernon for eleven and a half years. Prior to that, I was with the township in New Jersey for two, two and a half years. Prior to that, I was with the... worked for a town in Town of Islip in Long Island. And before that, I worked for Nassau County as a planner. So, I worked for a county, a town, a township, a city, and now a village. So, I just wanted to give you a little background about me, because this is the first time that we've actually had a chance to actually talk and, you know, to have a conference for you all to get to know me. At the same time, this exercise will allow me to get to know you. So, with that, I don't want to belabor the point anymore unless anyone has any questions or any comments. We can begin. Just going through the questions that... The questions that were sent out. So... Can everyone see my screen?
It's blank at the moment.
Yep.
That's correct. It's for taking notes. That's why it's blank. As we answer the questions, Sally, I will be writing. So, let's start with question one. What is your understanding of the zoning boards' processes?
Really large question. How... can you head us in the right direction?
All right. So... Walk me through this. I'm new to the board. Let's say I submit an application to the board. I appear before the board at the board meeting. What is the board's process? What happens? Well, better yet, how did I even get to the board? Let's start there.
Yeah, I would like to ask the question, because you're representing the village. When somebody sends an application in, how does it get to all the board members before it goes to the agenda?
Well, this is really yours to listen.
William, do you see the question in chat from LMC TV? There was a question from LMC TV. I don't know what happened to it.
Start the YouTube.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Go ahead. If you could please deal with that before we move forward, go on. Okay, sorry. Go ahead. I forgot.
And wait, sorry. Before we start, can I just ask a quick question? Do you prefer going by Will, William, or Mr. Long? Because I'm not sure, and I want to know, so that I know what the right way to address you is.
It's all... it depends. It's up to you. I answer to all of them. But nonetheless, most people call me Will.
Got it.
Yeah.
So, I thought that the goal of this was for us to talk about what we want to be our processes if we were going to establish bylaws and procedures.
Absolutely.
Except that we already have procedures, and we already have procedures, so we haven't... we're not really taught... we haven't talked, and that's not what we talked about, was changing what we're doing. It's really kind of making sure we all know what it is and putting it in writing, so it's a more formally-provided set of provisions.
Okay. It hasn't been written down right now. I just... I just see major, significant problems with our processes right now. So, I can't see participating and just simply writing it down without thinking about some of the issues that we've hit upon in the law.
Well, then, if that's the case, let's start right there. What do you see as being the issues?
We've had several applications that came to us that did not have the complete number of violations or need for variances on them, which extended the review, confused the review, was not... seems to be suboptimal for the applicant.
I think the issue... Right. The issue there is the village... the building inspector was not picking up all of the...
Yeah, but that happened a number of times, and it was up to us. So, I would like to... I've thought about ways of institutionalizing some things to try to avoid having to start reviewing of something that is... where everything has not been identified that's necessary to bring it into zone compliance.
Keep going. Go ahead, please.
Yeah. And, you know, along those lines, Meg, I feel like we've also just had some applications where... where there was like bad... I don't want to say bad advice, but that they were applying for something that didn't kind of make sense. So, we ended up all spinning our wheels quite a bit.
Right.
And that also goes back to that process issue of what goes to, you know, the building inspector to decide, and then what goes to us.
Okay.
I don't think the issue... Like, that's not an issue of our process. That's an issue of what happens before we get it.
Yeah, but I...
True.
That's true, but then we end up dealing with that issue on our end.
That's where it's got to be fixed. You have to fix it in the earlier stages, not when we get it.
Yeah, exactly. But that's... but that's then a problem that ends up in our lap. So, if we're talking about processes, I think we have to start there, you know?
So, when an application comes in, as I understand it, as I looked at Village Law, it comes in and the board sets a time to... to... sets a time to hear the appeal, put it on the agenda. So, I would like to know, especially now that Betty Ann's not there, I guess you're going to be setting up a new process. When is this application coming in? When will we get it? Because the sooner that we could identify things that are not clear, as Abby pointed out, that it's not clear even what's being asked, or that we all can see that there are things missing in terms of the... what's required to bring this... the property into zoning compliance, that we don't get... we don't have it on the agenda, open it up, start to hear from the applicant, and then find out that we're really... it's pretty in a rough state, and it should never have been opened.
Okay. We have no authority to review anything unless and until there's been something issued by the building inspector. This is why I'm saying it's not really up to us. If something comes in that's not correct, which, yes, lots of... we've had many, many things that came in that weren't complete or correct. There's nothing we can do at that point, because they're appealing a decision. So, that's why I'm saying all of this has to be corrected at an earlier stage. It has to be corrected at the stage of the building inspector correctly issuing the right violation.
Well, but I think that's what we're here for, right? This is a workshop with our new...
We can't do that. That's in the village law.
No, I understand that we can't do that, but we're talking about how that handover happens in part. I thought that was part of what the scope of this workshop was. It's a workshop. It's a brainstorming session.
And we have understood that we definitely cannot tell the applicant they need another variance. We can't start reviewing another variance that...
Well...
I'm sorry. Let me just finish. Violation. The building department has to have noted it. But I do believe it's our responsibility, if it's obvious to us that something is missing, to say, hey, we're not going to pursue this at this moment. Send it back to the building department to clarify and get a memo from the department if they need something. Just as... take, for instance, the home that is a unpermitted two-family. It needed another variance to... for us to grant, for it to continue as it was extending the non-conforming aspect of it. There's a jeopardy for the applicant. If we hadn't recognized that, there was no reason to start the application. It was immediately clear. So, either we ask for different things in the application, so that it forces these questions, that there's more clarity when we get them, or that we take a look at these and decide whether or not we want to move forward on them, whether they're ready for the agenda or not. Because I do believe that that's part of our responsibility.
It's actually not part of our responsibility to decide what. It is our responsibility to review. So, I think that... I think you're right to some degree, which is, an application is calendared. And the way it goes is the chair sets the calendar. It's called the meeting. But... Oh, and I'm sorry, but I don't think we want to get into the position of reviewing every application and saying... so we get a violation and the application comes in. Again, somebody's going to have to... Michael, you've got to see if we could even do this. But I don't know that we want to be in the position, every time an application comes in, of reviewing it and determining whether that was the violation. That's not our role, and it is definitely not our role. Not our role to review and determine whether the application... That's normally what would happen, what should happen. It hasn't happened ever, but it should happen, because we never had a planner or anybody reviewing this. What should happen is, the building inspector and the planner should be reviewing every application. When the building inspector issues a violation, the village planner, right, because that's, I think, their role. There's no one else to overview, or the village, someone in the village, an employee, has to be reviewing that and making sure it's correct and that all the violations are there. So, that...
So, what I was going to suggest, what I would like to see added to the application, I would like to see a zoning table that's separate from not having to go find it on the site plan, but on a page, a zoning table that asks for all the information that we normally ask for, as well as number of parking spaces, as well as driveway, quite a host of things. I would like to have on the same page both the district in which the property is located and the use of the property. So, we immediately... Someone can see, oh, this is a two-family, or this is a one-family, because lots of times we get applications, and it doesn't even tell us what the structure is being used for. I would also like to know whether it needs site plan review. These are questions we could ask on a form. It would sort of institutionalize that the right questions are being asked, and it would also put all of the information on one page, so it's easier for us, rather than looking through lots of different documents. Where is that... Where does it say what district it is? Where does it say where the site plan is? But if we had a page in which we're compiling this information, and the building inspector or the planner, whoever is going to take responsibility, can take this and can tell us that, other than the exception that's being asked for, that this property is zoning compliant. That's been missed.
May I?
That's a great idea.
Are you suggesting, Meg... I mean, it's a great idea, and it's part of the applicant. Are you suggesting that this is something the building department or the planner fill out? Or are you suggesting that this is something that the applicant fill out?
The applicant should fill out. It actually would be best... The same as a site plan is certified by an engineer or an architect. If it's possible, the architect or the engineer should, but it's the applicant's... applicant needs to do it, and then it needs to be signed by the building department, that they have reviewed it, and they are in agreement with it. And it would just take us one step closer than everybody has looked at all aspects.
May I? The building department is supposed to do a thorough investigation of an application that comes in. They are supposed to use what the code says, in addition to what the village law says, to make a determination. They need to identify area variance, use variance, this, that, and the other things, okay? What I think is very simple. I think that because of some of the items that have come in that didn't identify everything that needed to happen, there needs to be a checklist for the building department to make sure that they've done a thorough and complete evaluation. Fine, the applicant tells us what district it is, tells us what the parking... They're supposed to do that anyway, okay, on their application. My thing is, we need to know what determinations were made by the building department and why it was determined in that particular fashion. Why wasn't it compared to the multiple-dwelling law? Why? Okay? Tell us why it's not a use variance. It's an area variance. And we've gone through a couple of these, okay? So, really, what's needed, and I think the planning... the planner should work with the building department to develop a checklist for any application that comes in for evaluation, to determine if it needs to go to zoning or if it doesn't need to go to zoning. If it needs to go to zoning, these are the areas that has to... that have to be looked at. Zoning... If zoning takes an application, and they read it, and it finds out that instead of an area variance, they actually need a use variance, I think we, as a board, can make that determination and say, yes, you do need an area variance. We are not bound by the determinations of the building department. We're bound by what our rules and regulations and what governs us are for. So, I'm looking at it from a different perspective. I agree with Meg on items that need to be happening. I agree with Abigail on things that she said, and Rob and I agree with you on things that I've been saying. But I think we need to start with where the application comes in and who's determining that they've identified every aspect of that application before determining whether it goes to zoning or not. And I think we're...
I've been... Oh, sorry. Sorry, Doug. I thought you were done.
No, that's okay.
I agree. I've sort of been more used to what goes on in the city, because that's where I practice. I have been amazed that these applications don't have, in a sense, what Meg is asking for, a zoning chart, a set of zoning calculations.
Absolutely.
I think what Meg is asking for is right, but what Doug is asking for is also right, which is that as part of every application to the building department for any kind of permit, there... You know, unless it's clearly a permit like, you know, you need a permit to renovate your bathroom, obviously. But anything else, any enlargement, any significant alteration, anything like that, needs to go in, and there needs to be a checklist like this that has all of those questions identified, all the things that Meg was identifying, needs to be in it. But that's where it's got to be done. I mean, I think that's something that's...
That's what I was referring to. I was not referring to the fact that we're going to make up more things. I'm trying to avoid that we're staring at something...
Perfect. Yes.
...that's incomplete. So, I'm trying to institutionalize or push that we set up a form or a checklist, as Doug calls it, where a lot of this information is filed. And also, as to Abby's point, it would help us to look at one piece of paper with a lot of this information on it, so that, you know, we can hopefully, as we go into the meeting, we can each clarify what it is that we're actually trying to determine and not spin our wheels trying to figure out what this is. Because sometimes we get applications that say it needs a variant, and the building department hasn't even clarified, is it an area variance or a use variance? We've seen that.
We have clear and concise guidelines on area variances and use variances. The building department needs to take a look at those and making a determination of what type of variance they may need. And I think... I think that that being part of... part and parcel of the documentation helps us. But, you know, we can also look at something as it's presented to us if there is an error or omission in the application that's submitted or the determination by the building department, and we can make an adjustment to that. We have... We're obligated to do that, because we need to try to get it to the point where we have everything covered.
So, what I'm hearing from all of us, and I'm going to try to summarize, is that essentially the vetting process as to what comes onto our desk is not working right now, and that what we need is first clear documentation for applicants, so that they kind of can lay out all the information ahead of time. And then we need contextual and opinion from the building inspector to help us make our decisions. Does that sound right to everyone as to what we're saying as this first part?
I don't think it's an opinion. I think what we're saying is that every application to the Department of Buildings for a building permit, right? Because when you apply, you don't necessarily know you're going for a variance. So, every application to the Department of Buildings for a building permit, and maybe it's a category of building permits like alterations or enlargements. Obviously, you're going for a renovation of your bathroom, you know, your kitchen, whatever. It's not an issue. But every application like that, there should be, in a sense, a zoning compliance checklist using... A zoning compliance... And that is... So, my application, I'm now applying for an enlargement of my house. I want to add a new something in my backyard, okay? So, my application is going to say, I'm in a C... I'm in an R, but let's, you know, I'm in an X zoning district. And X zoning district has all of these requirements. And these are what is... And that goes to the building inspector, so that when the building inspector reviews the application for a permit, the applicant... The building inspector is... has all of the information he needs, that... Right? And it's all of the information he needs, so that when he reviews it and says, yes, you need a... Well, you said, you know, this is a two-family house, but in fact, the code, the village only listed as a one-family house, or whatever.
Or you say it's a family, and you only have one parking space. You recognize things.
Exactly. He recognizes it then, so that when he issues the violations, I mean, the determination, he'll say, you know, something like... He'll list the four things, or the seventeen things, or the one thing that actually doesn't comply. And as Doug says, that doesn't mean when we get it, we can't say, whoa, yes, he picked up this, but he didn't realize that.
Right. And that's why I called it an opinion, but it does sound more like a fact-finding. It's fact-finding. But we do need that, because we don't get any of that right now, and that's hard.
And if we develop that... You're absolutely right, Robyn. That would be great, if it starts right at the beginning of the process, when they're applying for something, and then it can just be pushed into the zoning... part of the zoning application. But I would also like the sign-off from the building department on the bottom of it. I've read this. I've seen it. I don't find anything else, because just hold them to it.
I don't know what good that's... Meg, the real issue isn't that we're holding them to it. So, he screws up. People screw up all the time. People...
Well, I know that he looked at the page.
Yeah, there's a measure of accountability, that even if he screws up, it's like, you know?
Right. I mean, he's got to look at it, so we have to know that's part of the application.
I want to know that he looked at it, that he didn't, oh, I didn't realize that. I didn't understand. The applicant didn't tell me. I want to know that it's on that piece of paper.
Fair enough. So, Greta, do you have anything?
No. I... No, I agree with what Meg has suggested. I think we do need a better process, so I don't have anything to add from that perspective. But I guess this is my question. What I find, and this is... Is that we do a lot of discussion about how we want processes to be improved, when we've had some discussions about applications and how to improve applications. And then we have the discussion, and then we get so busy with other matters, nothing ever follows through. So, my issue is not so much what other board members are suggesting, because I think they're great. My issue is to make sure we follow through and we actually get this checklist.
The checklist isn't our checklist. The checklist isn't a checklist that the village should... presumably, the village planner or the building department should be preparing for...
We're going to ask for it in our application, then it can be our checklist, if it's our... If our application... Can't we ask for certain things in an application?
Well, wait.
And things like that.
If we're... If we're saying to the building department, here is... We want you to have this new checklist, and so every application that gets submitted, again, you know, maybe there are limits, has to include this. Right? You have to complete this information in your permit application, so there's a page of the... You're not just submitting the plans with that small checklist. You're submitting a full, you know, more information on the plans. So, that... That's not up to us. That's up to them. If we want to have a separate checklist, I'm not sure... I mean, if you're asking for something separate, that's different, then we can do it.
If you just want to make sure it happens, and to just say, well, I hope they do it. It's their job, then I say, then let's not wait on it. Let's create it for our own application. But if we see evidence of it, that it's happening, and they created something that's... that is sufficient for our needs, then we don't need to duplicate it, but I think...
So, you're suggesting that we create a checklist, a zoning checklist, that is... We forget the building department completely. A zoning... I mean, just for this purpose, right? We're not talking about them. You're suggesting that we create a separate zoning checklist as part of our application to be prepared by the applicant.
I think it should be by the building department.
Yeah, but that's not what Meg is... Meg is saying, part of the application. If it's an application, it's not... I mean, it's part of the application to the DOB, so I'm a little confused.
I think we're talking about two different parallel tracks, right? I think we're talking about Meg's idea, which is, can we make a much clearer application, one-pager or something, that the applicant has to fill in all the relevant information from the get-go, so we don't go back, and there's not a parking space issue or whatever? But we're also saying, in addition to that, we need the bill to know that there's a building inspector checklist, that the building inspector has gone through, fact-checked everything. It seems so... It seems to me like we're talking about two. Am I right here, or am I wrong? Two different checklists?
I think that I think most of us have come to a consensus, that we would like to see this checklist when an application is filed. If the building department should develop something like that, I don't see that it has to be duplicated. But I'm saying, but...
In the interim.
In the interim, I'm saying we do it. Maybe we can prod it. Maybe the building department will take what we say and use it, and then push it forward to the part of the building department. But as Greta just said, I don't want to wait on someone to do that. We've all come to a consensus that this would help us greatly, and it would also be... And it may look like a lot more work for an applicant, but actually, they should understand that it's more likely that their review will go more smoothly if they fill it out. So, I don't want to waste time doing that. I don't mean waste time, but I would rather just go ahead and formulate something. And then if it's picked up by the building department, that they like this idea, and it becomes something, then I'm fine with using whatever the building department comes up with. But... So, I don't really see it as two different ones. I don't see...
Well...
Wait for the building department to do that.
You know, we can develop a checklist and make it part of the zoning application. And... But we still have to go back to the building department and have them tell us how they reached their determination. And if we provide them with a checklist, is it a use variance? What... Why isn't it a use variance? Is it an area variance? Why isn't it an area variance? You know, and we provide them with what we anticipate and expect to see when an application does come before us, okay? We'll have a better understanding, but at some point, somebody has to develop that and turn around and say to the building department, hey, listen, if this doesn't comply with what they're capable of building, tell us why it doesn't. Tell us why it isn't this. Tell us why it isn't that. Tell us why the multiple-dwelling law applies or doesn't apply. Give us the information. We need to know why you discounted this, because that flags to us, and we, as a board, can make a determination and say, you know what? It's not an area variance. It's a use variance, or it's not a use variance. It's an area variance.
Or you need more than one area variance.
Right. Or you need an area variance and four or five variances regarding property line, regarding this, that, or the other thing, okay? Yes, and I think that we need the building department to tell us that.
Okay. So, just now... So, I think that, yes, I think the building department has to, but I understand what Meg is saying about... I don't know how... We don't know how long it will take for the building department to actually come up with something that works. So, and going to what Greta has said about, we talk about it, but nothing happens. I just want to say to you that we've had drafts... Now, we may be changing them completely, but this is all up to us. I have mentioned on more than one occasion whether or not you wanted to discuss the, you know, revisions to the application. And every time we talk about it, everybody always says, no, the meeting's too long. It's already too long. So, we haven't done it. If we are serious about this, then we... And I certainly don't want meetings to go longer than they do. Then we're going to have to have a couple of separate meetings to do nothing but the application, which is the only way any of this is going to get done. We can't just say, not this time, another time. So, whatever we want to do, we're going to have to either ensure that no matter how long a meeting goes, we're going to take up the application, or we have to have a separate work session like this to take up the changes to the application, for example, to include the checklist that we've just talked about. Because I think Meg's right, since we don't know how long it's going to take for the building department to come up with a checklist that works of zoning, that maybe in the interim, we come up with something, and then when and if the building department... Which it needs to. I mean, this is something they should do. When they do that, let me not say if, when they do that, we... We can eliminate everything, because it's already done where it should be done.
Okay, but can I just point out something? Will here convened this meeting. He's our new planner. So, before we say that we got to do it on our own, I'd like to hear from him. And maybe he has some templates from past uses. Maybe this is on his agenda. Will, what is your plan, or what are your thoughts about? Will, what is your plan or what are your thoughts about this?
I would say, I would say to you as a board, don't spend your time, don't spend so much time on trying to create something for the building department, because there's no guarantee that the building department's going to use it. If I was the zoning, if I were on the zoning board, I would spend my time focusing on things that the zoning, that is within the zoning board's control, which is what items do you want on the agenda? Uh, I mean, what items do you want, do you need in order to be able to reach a decision in an efficient amount of time? What items do you think should be in the checklist and in the application? Those type of things. That's where I would spend my time. And just so you know, um, I, as a planner, I am working with the building department to create what's called a, um, I had a copy of it. It's called a plan examiner's report. So typically what happens in most places is the building department applicant submits to the building department. The building department then has a plan examiner. It's called plan examiners, when it's called plan review. They then issue what's called the plan examiner's report. And on that report, it does just what you're talking about. It indicates all of the items, all of the variances that are necessary, and it indicates all of the boards that are necessary, whether it's the planning board, your board, uh, Harbor Coastal B A R. That's for the building department. What's going, the way we are moving is that the building department is the one who makes the determination. So it's not a planning department determination at all as it relates to reviewing the code. The planning department, planning staff will assist the building department. But again, ultimately is their decision. They have to make it. So that would be my advice to you.
Okay. So we will concentrate on making a checklist for our application.
So with that, you sort of began to talk about items that you wanted to see. A zoning table, you wanted to make sure that in your application, it was very clear as to what the zoning district is, whether there were any parking, what the number of parking spaces is.
Every requirement, every, it's not, I mean, those are the ones you're saying, but it's got to be every requirement of the zoning requirement. So all the yard requirements, all of the, what the existing, what the existing use is. If it's a, if it's a non-conforming use, why the non-conforming, why and when the non-conforming will establish. Um, all of that is what has to be on that zoning chart.
There's, there's some, so some restrictions about driveways and views. There's also about land that's next to municipal property or another town. When it, you know, it would need another review. There's quite, it's quite extensive, but if we could capture it all, it would just help me so much.
I, I, I think, I, I think one of the things that nice to happen on the zoning checklist is simple. If a building has been unoccupied or not in operation for six months or more, that needs to be identified on the application. How long has that building been vacant and not functioning? That goes back to what we talked about with the restaurant on, uh, what is it? Melbourne and Halsted? Is that what it is? Melbourne and Halsted?
Oh, yeah, on Halsted. Yes.
Yeah. You know, I mean, these are things that, you know, that we need the applicant to identify. You know, I mean, you can't come and say, well, it was used as a restaurant. Yeah. Well, the building's been shut down for six months. And once that happens, whatever it had before is no longer in existence. It's a new application.
Right.
So I, I think that we need that kind of information on our zoning. Okay? Uh, other things we need on, you know, and I don't think we can rely on the applicant to tell us whether he's applying for an area variance or a use variance. I think that has to be done by the building department.
No, we're not talking about the actual violation. We'll get a notice of violation. We're talking about all the components, I think, of the property that we're reviewing in light of the fact that we have to consider the violation that was sent.
Right. Or this, or this special permit to conduct the business or whatever it is. Okay? We need to know the information rather than, uh, well, gee, you know, we're going to adjourn this meeting because we need somebody to tell us how long that building has not been in operation in, in what it was.
But these are.
That's the kind of stuff that will speed our application along if we have that information upfront.
Right. But that's, I think what, what, um, I think what Will, Will, William was saying was essentially that if the village, whether or not the building inspector is going to create such a checklist, we don't know. Therefore, we have to create the checklist ourselves as part of our application. And that checklist is going to be prepared by the applicant. We cannot require, I don't know if we can require the building inspector to sign off on it. If we can, great. If we can't, we still have to have that. And so the applicant has to prepare that checklist. The applicant has to sign it. Um, and with that checklist, we will have something. And if we can get the building inspector to sign off on it, that's great. I'm not, I don't know if we can. I don't know what we can.
Initial.
I don't know if we can make the building inspector do that. Okay?
I, I don't, I don't know. William, can I make a comment to your last thing you wrote down? Okay. You put down in there a special permit as well.
Well, just everything. You have to go through the zoning code and look at all the.
No, no, I'm talking, I'm talking about the last one that William wrote. How long has the building been vacant when seeking to reestablish a non-conforming use structure? No, it's when seeking, also when seeking a special permit, because the application that came before us was for a special permit to operate a restaurant that had not been in existence for well over six months. All right. You got it. Okay.
Um, so, so it's just a question of going through everything in the zoning code and getting it more specifically identified.
Right. I agree.
That's the, any.
Also, so that, I, I think that's great. And I'm glad that we're all aligned on seeing that we were lacking that. And, um, but also, so when the applications come in, Robin, are you, you're reviewing them and then deciding in what agenda they'll go on to? Is that it?
Essentially, I mean, look, let's face it, I don't have, and I'm not going to, it's not my job and I don't review it as my job to determine whether or not, and I don't, and I would say this would normally be, I mean, I don't know what the right word is, but normally there would be staff of the, um, village that would, when an application comes in, in theory, the application is complete. And so all I'm really doing when I'm reviewing, and I just review it quickly because honestly, you know, I don't have the time. I review it to make sure that I think it's complete. I'm not making sure that it's right. So if an application comes in and asks for an area variance in order to put, to reduce the number of parking spaces, they want to put it in permitted use, but reduce the number of parking spaces, right? I don't make sure that in fact, they are asking for seven parking, a reduction from 10 to seven, when in fact they need a reduction from 15 to 10. That I'm not doing. Um, if, you know, and that's why I say it's not our job to be doing that in, in, in the beginning. And if the village, in theory, is a village, you know, and that would be the planner, unfortunately, would be doing that. If there is no one in the village, I mean, you know, it's very hard. It was, certainly wasn't Betty Ann's job and nor should she have been.
You are correct. It's the planning department's job.
The planning department should be reviewing that, making sure that everything is there. And if we have this checklist, then the checklist has to be.
So if, if the application is complete, it, it seems that it does come to our board. I'm just concerned about, we have an application that's on our, our agenda coming up that originally you had said was time barred and then the applicant pushed a little harder. And I'm concerned that that was an application that was complete and it was sent to the board. And it might be that we weren't going to hear it. And there are some times when I think the board should be making the determination as to whether.
Meg, that is not exactly what happened. What happened was that the applicant, the village, the, um, building, Betty Ann said the application came in on X day. Based on the day that Betty Ann said the applicant came, application came in, the question as determined by our council was, were they, was that application based on the time? The only person who made a determination was our council. Based on the date the application was submitted, was the application timely? And the determination was, no, the application was submitted on X day and X day was more than, whatever it is, 60 days, 60, whatever the day is, 30, whatever the date is, was more than the requisite. There was no longer time for them to expire. Then the applicant said, no, they didn't submit it on June 1st. They submitted it on May 31st. And here's the evidence that they submitted on May 31st. There was no determination made as to whether they had said, the village and the board had, Betty Ann had said it was submitted on one date. And in fact, the applicant demonstrated it was submitted on a different date. That's all that, and the only, and we cannot, we can't be doing this. We can't be sitting around all the board members deciding, well, I think it's timely and I think it's not. That's a determination based.
That's a determination for the entire board. It was an application that was given to the board and the board as a whole decides. It's not any one per, not any one.
No. Board does not decide if something is timely. That's a legal decision. That's made by the council. The council, our council decides whether or not it's timely because it's a jurisdiction.
What's the basis of that view, Robin? Because it seems to me council gives us some advice, but it's appropriate for the board to really make a determination. Because timeliness is not so clear cut. And there were many arguments this applicant had. It wasn't just that I submitted it on this day, not that day. She had other arguments as to why it was timely. And why would we be beholden to our council's opinion?
I've also.
Basis of that.
I've been on the other.
Are, are the other arguments, the point is all those arguments, the key issue here, the, our code, and this tells us that we have a certain number of days after a decision is made to, that's what the code says. This is not, and there's no dispute about what the code, the law says. The law says you have to file an application within X days. So the only question.
When you were made aware of.
No, the code doesn't say made you, when you are made aware. There are court cases that say, um.
So you see, we're getting into a gray area. The application was sent to the board. I feel that those kinds of applications should come to the board and we decide. It should not be withheld.
It should not be the lawyer. The lawyer advises us, but what, what authority does he have in the code to make that determination?
I don't think the lawyer needs authority in the code. I think normally that's a legal decision. We're saying you want to make.
When you get legal decisions, you decide.
Greta, are you saying you think the board should be making the legal decision?
I think, I think it's a combination of a factual and legal decision. It's factual too. You can't divorce the facts.
Before I got on the board, I was involved in a residence appeal in which the other side was arguing that we were time barred. So it was a very important issue and we were able to go forward. But I don't think that, that's why I think it's the board as a whole should be considering the precedent of the village and the case law that's involved. Um, and it shouldn't be an automatic denial.
I think, Meg, when it's clear, then I disagree with you. When it's not clear, and sometimes it's not clear. And in the particular case that you're talking about, if, for example, the applicant had never, had, hadn't been in communication with the Department of Buildings at all, because the applicant didn't know anything about what was going on. So the applicant didn't know anything was happening next door until, um, you know, two weeks after the permit was issued because they put something on the property. Then you have a question. But here, where the application was filed and the, um, and the issue before the board was a simple question of, did they file it time? You're saying that whether it was timely is up to the, to the.
If I may, if I may, if I may, um, I understand what you're, what you're getting at. What I would ask you to do, because there's really no application in front of you, is talk in the generic and not so specific. So that you're not dealing with any app, you don't, you don't want to, you're not.
And if an application is complete and, and is submitted to the board, then it's up to the board to decide that there's some reason why it's not timely or it's not in our jurisdiction. Um, it's not for parties in, before us to make that decision for the board.
Or a legal advisor. You know, the legal advisor can give his or her opinion. But they're not, the legal advisor is not the board. We're the board. And all these decisions aren't purely legal. And in fact, you say it's black and white, the lawyer should make a decision. Well, in this case, the lawyer made a decision thinking it was black and white and turned out he was wrong.
No, it was black and white. It's just that he had the wrong information. It was.
Well, wrong, wrong facts. That's why we need to be involved in this.
I would have to say that my determination was correct based on the facts before me. I advised Robin, but ultimately I didn't make the final decision. Like you said before, my, my job is to advise. And it's actually, it's not an actual notice standard. It's a constructive notice standard. So based on that, and after reviewing it, I gave my opinion. Ultimately, the decision's up to you, but my initial determination based on the information in front of me was correct.
Thank you. Thank you. So then it should have gone to the board with your advice and your opinion. Um, but that Robin spoke for the board, I guess, that you, you took that and made a decision for us.
Correct.
And I think it's, I'm just, I, since we're talking about processes, I think it should come to the board as a whole.
What should, so what should come to the board? What are you suggesting in a general generic view of what comes to the board? Normally what happens is an application is submitted to Betty Ann. Lots of applications. Betty Ann gets, and again, it's not Betty Ann now, but the person in the role of Betty Ann gets tons of applications. They're not necessarily complete. What are you suggesting? That she submits everything she gets to the board? No, we can't do that. Um, so what are you suggesting?
You're sending back for incompleteness and asking for more and for, you know, to, until it's a complete. But that wasn't the issue, as I understand it, trying to talk generically and talking generically about an application that was complete, but was not going to be put on the agenda because it had been determined that it wasn't timed.
I actually don't know if that application was complete. I didn't look at that and make that determination until after the time. So that's why I'm asking, Meg, that's why I'm asking.
Who, who decides?
Are suggesting that we do, which applications get sent, get, get sent to the full board of decision? That's what I'm asking you. I, that's what I'm trying to figure out. What gets sent to the board for determination?
Complete, complete applications. But so I'm hoping that somebody is vetting, um, in the staff as assisting us and is making sure that it's a complete application.
And that is, that's planning staff's job. So that is what we do.
So, so William, it's your responsibility to review the applications that are submitted to this board to make sure that they are complete, to the best of your knowledge.
That's correct.
Because nobody's perfect. We all make mistakes. So to the best of your knowledge, you make a determination of whether the application is complete or not, and then it gets placed onto the agenda. Correct?
Yes.
Is that, is that correct?
In my experience, yes. That's the way.
Okay. So 28 days before our agenda is put up, you guys go through the review process and say, yeah, this is acceptable to go on to the agenda because it is complete. To the best of your knowledge.
That's correct.
Because nobody on this, I haven't met anybody who's perfect yet. So.
But I want, but I want to be clear about how the staff makes that determination. So what happens is in your rules and procedures, like you mentioned, there's sort of a checklist that comes from the rules and procedures. It identifies the minimum items that your board determines are needed and necessary for an application to be deemed complete. All staff does is looks at those, that list and looks at what the applicant is submitting. Say, if it matches, boom, they go to your agenda. If it doesn't match, the staff says, I'm sorry, your application doesn't meet the minimum requirements of the board. Here's your application back until you fix whatever items. That's how it works.
Thank you. Meg, to your point.
That's fine with me. That's good.
To your point, if we want them to submit a more complete application based on the information that we want, then I agree. We need to put a checklist together and give it to the planning department for their review of the application to make sure that it is more complete with the information that we want.
Right. We've, that's, I think, I think, Doug, we all agreed on that already. That's not the question here. The question here is, Meg is suggesting that what goes on the agenda needs to be reviewed by the board. And what I'm asking is what is she saying? Is she saying, are you saying that every application, when it comes in and once it's deemed complete, we circulate it to the board? The board determines what's on the agenda and wait, the full board determines what's on the agenda, then it goes back, then the agenda gets up? I will tell you, that's not how it's done anywhere. Um, I don't know that, and I just think of how much more, or are you suggesting something? Or are you suggesting something less than that, Meg? And if so, what are you trying to suggesting? Because I, I don't understand.
I thought, I thought Will just said that he will look at it for, to make sure it's complete and he puts it on the agenda. I'm not sure what you're asking, Robin, why that.
So, so if I may.
You said it was up to the full board to decide if something should be on the agenda that nobody, that I shouldn't be making, nobody else should be making that decision. And so what I'm saying to you is if it's up to the full board to make that decision, how do you foresee?
Maybe I should say, I don't, I think that a complete application should go on the agenda and it would be up to the board to decide if it's not timely or not in our jurisdiction or some.
But you see, we can't, and when do we make that decision? Because the agenda gets posted. So we, what you're suggesting, if I understand you correctly, is as follows, as a practical matter. Applications have to come in, there's a deadline for getting applications to be considered for the next meeting. Right? That's the deadline. Those applications, at the time they are submitted, so let's assume the application deadline, I'm making these dates up purely as a, you know, just so we understand. Let's assume the application deadline is, oh, let me ask, let me be a little practical. William, do you remember, you know, how many days before the, because it says so somewhere, how many days before the meeting does the application have to be in?
I believe it's 22 days.
Okay. So 20, and how many days before the meeting does the agenda have to be?
Published, right.
Published.
Five days before the meeting.
Okay. So the application comes in, it's marked complete 22 days. So that means, so the application.
No, no, no. The deadline is 22 days before.
I understand that. So the deadline, but that deadline is a, is a complete application. Right? If, 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 if those, if that 22 days comes in, and so somebody gets the application and you know, somebody starts submitting an application on, let's assume the meeting was January 22nd, because it's a 22nd. Let's make it February 22nd, February 22nd. That would mean the complete, the application had to be submitted by February 1st.
Ah, July 31st.
You mean June, January 31st. Okay, but with.
January 31st.
Yeah. Okay. So January 31st, the application has to be submitted. If it, now, when do you make your determination of completeness? Do you make your determination of completeness before January 31st or after January 31st?
I'll tell you what, tell you what happens essentially. The applicant, it's called, it's start over. I just want to start over. What happens is what's called acceptance. The applicant is trying to get their application accepted. So 22 days before, that's the submission deadline, the applicant submits. If the applicant has all of the information that you prescribed, so be it. The application is then accepted. If they don't, staff gives it back. The 22 days in between the time that the submission deadline and your actual board meeting allows staff to conduct the technical review. The technical review is making sure things are correct. So like they're not, the drawings are not upside down, that kind of stuff.
Okay. But going back to my initial question, I have, I want to submit an application. Okay? And I submit, you know, so I come in on January 15th with an application. So it's here by January 31st. Okay? When does the village determine that it's complete? Does the village determine that before January 31st? Or does the village not make that determination until after January 31st? That's my first question. When do you make that determination?
After January 31st.
Okay. So we don't even know. So somebody submits an application, middle of January or whenever they submitted, and sometime after January 31st, the planner, William will make the decision that it's complete and any other determinations. If he sees some other error, he would raise that. Okay? At some point thereafter, it's determined, you make the determination that all of these five, six, 10 applications are complete. Okay? Then theoretically, they would go to the board to be put on the agenda. So my question for you, Meg, is, so now the village planner has said, here are 10 applications. So let's, let's say January 31st, I don't know when, January 31st, February 15th, right? Village staff has said, okay, these are the 10, these are the nine, there were 10 applications submitted, nine of which are complete. These are the nine applications that are complete and can be placed on the agenda. That's what happens. Now, Meg, my question for you is, what, where, what you were talking about is having the board determine what's on the agenda. What are you suggesting? Now we are at, I don't care.
You're really mixing up what I was saying and I'm sorry if I wasn't clear, if my words are different. I understand it's 22 days before. The planner, Mr. Long is going to be reviewing, making sure they're complete. And then he says they go on the agenda. I would assume that if 20 come in one month, you're going to have to say, sorry, you're going to have to wait another month. I'm saying that we're reviewing before they go on the agenda. I'm saying if you are thinking about kicking any complete applications out, that they should be on the agenda and we decide then, when we hit it on the agenda, that if there's something wrong with it, that it's not somebody is in between us not even knowing that the complete application came in and someone's deciding that it's not appropriate for us to review. I'm not talking about getting all of the applications to review in advance. I'm talking about, I want to know how many applications are, are denied the ability to come to us for review. Is that an extraordinary, a large number or a small?
In the time that I've been on the board, I have no, no knowledge of anyone else filing an application that was, that I know of. Doesn't mean there haven't, because they may be, lots of applications could be rejected at an earlier stage. They could be rejected when they come to Betty Ann. Betty Ann could have said to them, I'm sorry, this was a, you know, the building department issued its object, its permit, or it's a determination on, you know, September 2019 and you didn't file it until January 20. She may, may make those determinations automatically. I have no idea. I only know of this one because this one came with a question to me. I never don't know of any others. So I can't answer your question.
Can I get in here?
Yeah.
Let's go this way. If we have, first of all, have we set a limit on the number of applications that come before us at any particular meeting?
Yeah, we did. We set that at six.
Six, okay. So who determines what six come on the application?
The first six.
Wait a minute, hold on a second. The first six. After that, they go into sequence, seven, eight, nine, 10. So if number one is rejected, you can go to seven. You know, if one and two, then you go to seven and eight. So you go down and you fill the, you fill the agenda based on the number of applicants. The rest of them are postponed and put off to the following month.
Right.
Right? Okay. So, Meg, I'm kind of confused why you would want everything listed on the agenda when we already have a progression.
I didn't say I wanted everything on the agenda. I don't know.
I think, I think I understand what Meg is saying now. Let me.
It's something that was complete and it, and maybe it has to be delayed for another month. I'm not saying it has to be that month that they sent it in, but that it would just be rejected and the board would not even know that had been submitted and didn't, was, the board was not the one to determine that for some reason.
So you're suggesting, if I understand you correctly, Meg, right? Planner makes a determination that these 10 applications are complete. Okay? So I get sent six, six applica, six, six, I get sent six of them or however many I get. I review the six and make my own determination that they're complete, right? I may look and say, no, wait a minute, you missed this, right? Because we all do that. Now, if I determine that in fact it's not complete, are you telling me I can't do that? Or are you saying, no, you're only if you determine that it's complete, but then you reject it for a different reason other than completeness?
I'm not saying you can't push it back because something is incomplete. I am saying that no matter what the applicant was going to do, we were not going to be able to review it, that you were just.
I think that's fair. I'm, I'm fine with that. I'm fine with that. That before a decision made, that the board cannot, has no jurisdiction or no power to review a particular application.
Yes.
That's okay. That's fine.
That's all I, I'm sorry.
That's fine, because, because as I say, to the best of my knowledge, this is the first one that's ever happened. So we're talking about a very small number of applications and they never happen again. It never, I never saw this before. I don't know whether, you know, in all that went before I was chair all the time, you know, the years that I was not chair, I don't know whether or not a previous, anything happened previously. So I can't answer that. I can only tell since I have been chair, this is the first one that I know of. Okay?
Everybody, I.
I think that's fair. I think that's fine.
I, I just want to mention that, this is Abby, that our time is up. This is just booked for an hour. So I know we have more agenda items, but I have to go put my daughter to bed soon. So I'm wondering, you know.
This is the only item that's on the agenda. So I mean, the board, this is the only thing in the board, you know, I put it out there that it shouldn't take an hour, but if the board needs more than an hour, take your time. Staff is here.
Well.
I'm looking at the board.
Okay. So let's go moving, moving fast so we can do this. So, so, so I, can I, can I make a suggestion now so we can do this? The big issue that we have dealt with is, which is really what Meg was getting to by talking about the checklist, it's really part of the application. So if you recall, we've had the application, we've reviewed the application multiple times and a lot of what we've talked about goes to that application question. So I would suggest, as I said, that we set a meeting, another work session for September or October to do, do nothing else but review the application and we spend the time. And when we do that, it includes all changes like the addition of this checklist and whatever else we want to add to that at that time. Because everything we're really talking about is that, has to do with what the submittal is.
Well, Madam Chair, if I may, if I can throw out a suggestion. I think I have a sense of what the board is looking for. So if the board would allow me to create a draft checklist and disseminate that to the board, then the board could have something to look at and to respond to. At that point, once you're comfortable with the checklist, then we'll begin to, then we will get, take from the checklist and begin to draft the rules and procedures.
That's, that's the check, what, we've only been talking about a checklist that has, that is related solely to zoning compliance. Here are the zoning standards, has nothing to do with any other piece of the procedure, right? We have an application form that really sets a lot of what those procedures are in the form. What we need to do is take the checklist that you're going to draft with the draft application form that we have previously reviewed and sit down and go through it and come up with the entire, what we want in the application package. This was only about a particular, one piece of that application, not the entire application. So board members, are you okay with having a work session to discuss the application?
Probably in October.
Well, I, I'd like to do it as soon as possible because we, we kick things down the road and then they just, they just don't get done. And these are important things to do. And there's some other important issues.
Right. I have. Yep.
Beyond the, this, the important things we discussed today, we did receive a communication from Sue McCrory and I think we need to.
I did.
Fully transparently discuss the issue she brought up in the public.
I didn't just receive anything from Sue McCrory.
You didn't receive anything from Sue?
I have not, so to the extent that.
Robin, I'll forward it to you.
To the extent that you received something, I never did.
Okay. You definitely should get a copy of that and we should take some time to discuss the concerns that she brought up in, in a transparent, public way. So, so that, I don't know, you know, we have a full agenda for next week. Maybe next week we can talk about a date to, to discuss the checklist and to the application.
Can I, can I, can I just put something out there? I want to say this, you know, I've, I've been going to board meetings for the past 20 years. And again, I think if you would allow me, I think I can help you get where you're trying to go. But the question is, would you, would you allow me to do it?
Well, what is it you're proposing to do? It's not, you said make up the checklist, but it's not just the checklist.
Well, that's the beginning. That's just the beginning. There's a whole, like you said, there's an entire application package. I'm very familiar with what you're looking for.
But I think what we're starting to raise is things like the role of our council and what goes on in between meetings and what is the board privy to and not privy to. So these are things beyond the application that happens to be what has resulted in our village.
Fair enough. And that's, that's fair. But I think in terms of the application, and I'm not talking about those items, the items that you're referring to are things that, yes, you as a board, I think 100% need to sit down and, and discuss and tell me what you want. Fine, no problem. But in terms of what you're looking for, the zoning table, the setbacks and all of that stuff, that's stuff that is pretty much done across the board. So from that perspective, I'd like to give you something to, to respond to. That's all I'm asking.
I agree. You should do that. Please do that.
Wait, excuse me.
That doesn't solve, that doesn't, as it is a much bigger issue that, that we're talking about. So I mean, I don't have any idea what Sue McCrory raised, so I don't know whether her issues are.
Oh, I'm not talking about that.
Robin, Robin, I forwarded it to you. You should have it.
That's great. Why are we on the wheel?
Yeah. I'm sorry, Abby, can you say it again? I didn't hear the first part.
No, I'm, I'm thinking, well, I think that would be a great start. Like why reinvent the wheel if there are, you know, templates that he can take from other places that can get us started? You know, I, I think that would be a great start for what we're talking about. And then the bigger, some of the bigger strategic issues that Robin and Meg, you were both raising, then we can address those. But let's first fix the, you know, the paperwork.
Well, we already have a working draft of a revised, updated application. So that we already are in the process of that. So I don't think we need to, we've done some work, so we shouldn't lose the work that we've done.
Right.
Send it to me. Send it to me. I'll be glad to incorporate it. Send it to me. Absolutely.
Betty Ann should have it. You should get it from, you find it in the village. The village has it. This is something we did that Betty Ann.
It was actually, I think, our last planner who said, actually said, oh, we're going to make something uniform about all the applications. And that actually was one of the reasons we paused at that point, as I.
No, I think we just paused because we couldn't ever have enough time for.
I remember.
Meetings.
Right, telling us he, there's something going online, they're all going to be uniform. So we were going to.
I don't remember that. But, but anyway, so we, so we have the form that we've worked on, right? We have a draft, you know, I'm not saying it's, it's done. I don't think it is done, but it is, it is a work in progress. This gets added to that and that solves the application. But you're talking about other issues that are not related to the application. So let's separate out, to make this work, to get there somewhere, let's separate out the application, right? That's a piece from other concerns, right? Because there's separate pieces. I don't know what Sue, I mean, it did not read what Sue McCrory sent. So presumably her comments are not related to the form of the application. They're related to something else.
Correct. Or the process as opposed to an application.
Right. And I think that's what we have. So I think that's a separate issue. Right. And I think that's what we have. So I think that's a separate issue. So I suggest, I repeat, I said this. Let us set a date and maybe we, whoever just said that at the, at the meeting, we pick a date. You know, we don't discuss anything else, but we pick a date for the meeting to discuss, and we need to, going to have need to. If we have an application, that's going to take us a while. And then we have other issues that are going to take us a while. Maybe we need two meetings to discuss these, two work sessions to discuss these procedural process meetings. So, um, I, I take it Doug, that you can't do a meeting in September?
It's difficult. The end of September, maybe towards the end of September.
Right. Well, I think it would have to be the end of September. So I would suggest that we come up with a date, the end, towards the end of September, maybe the la- I don't have a calendar in front of me, but maybe the last week of September to, see if we can pick a date there. And William, if you would check if there's any days there that are available, right? Because we have to coordinate. We can't have it on the same day as another meeting. So if you would check last week of September and let us know, and then at the meet, and maybe at the meeting next Thursday, we can pick the date and decide whether we want to talk application first or other issues first. Does that work?
I have to say, Abby, by, by actually having multiple meetings, but keeping them short, it's easier to not get tired and stay-
Well, that's right. I think it would work better to focus each meeting on something specific. I think we'd be more effective too because we know we're only doing this and we're only doing that.
Yeah. That, that, that was me, Robin. Um, I'm sorry, everyone. I really have to sign off because I have to get my daughter to bed.
Okay.
So I'll leave you all to it and await answers via email or next week. So, all right. Take care.
Night, Abby.
Night, Abby.
Night.
Um, okay. So we, so everyone will have a date. William, for the next meeting, William will have a, know whether there's any available dates and we will think about when, and if you could send it, when you figure that out, William, if you could let us all know in advance which the days are so that we can see whether any of those work for us.
Yes. Yes, I'll do that.
Then we can figure out, and if not, then find the next, early October, the earliest dates in October that we can do it. Again, the same thing, so that we can have it sooner rather than later. We can decide at the meeting on Thursday, we can decide whether you want to discuss application-related issues or process-related issues at the first meeting. And then the next meeting would be whichever one the other one is.
Great. And, and Will, thank you very much for setting this up and for taking on the task of wrapping the checklist and all. Thank you for your help.
Yes, absolutely. Absolutely.
Okay.
Good night, everybody.
See you next week. Have a good, have a good end of September.
Yeah, and enjoy your week.
Bye.
Well, enjoy your five days or whatever it is.